This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Good evening. Welcome to the Easthampton City Council meeting for Wednesday, February 16. The meeting tonight is being recorded and broadcast by Easthampton Media on Charter, Channel 193, and live streaming on their YouTube channel. All councilors and participants in this meeting are gathering remotely on the executive order by Governor Baker extended to April 2022, which allowed us to do so. I remind both the members of the city council and of the public to remain mute until recognized by the president. Also, for the members of the public, please remove your camera for the duration of the meeting unless you are participating in police speak time or public hearing. Thank you. This meeting is now called to order. Barbara?
Connie Denham? Here. Salem Derby?
President.
Omar Gomez?
Here.
JP Kuzinski?
Here.
Tom Peak?
Here.
Brad Riley? Dan Rist?
Here.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Here.
Owen Zaret?
Here.
Please stand up for the political.
Pledge allegiance to the flag. United States of America. And to the republic. For which it stands. One nation. With liberty and justice for all.
With liberty and justice.
Thank you. I will take a motion to approve the minute from February 2nd, 2022.
I move to approve the minutes of February 2nd.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any further discussion? See you now, Barbara.
Connie Denham? I. Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad's here. Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Hi.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Motion passes. Police speak time. Please state your name and address for the record. And if from the public, they want to talk to the council, this is the time to do it. Please write your hand. If you can, please use the electronic one. It will be better. So that way I can see that. If not, that will be okay. I have two screens, so I will see everybody. Please come into the council. And Johnny, I hope I say your name correctly.
Take anything close. It's Joni. Thank you. Hi, everybody. Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, and everyone in attendance. A few months ago, a group of neighbors met regarding the nearby intersection of South and Main Streets. As many of you know, this launched a more formal initiative to increase the safety at an intersection that's seen more accidents over the last 20 years than any other in the city. I was looking forward to this meeting to provide an update on our progress so far. Tonight, however, the focus on the need for this change has become more urgent. On Saturday, just a few hours after I left the area collecting signatures, and a few minutes after my family and I traveled home on South Street after my son's basketball game at Mountain View School, yet another accident occurred. Saturday provided us a break from frigid temperatures and therefore offered an excellent opportunity to be at Old Colony Package Store and College Highway Variety, where both proprietors have been welcoming to our efforts. Spending time at the intersection watching traffic patterns is hair raising. I've witnessed several close calls over the past few weeks. On Saturday, the roads were dry, snowbanks were low, and it was not yet completely dark. One vehicle crossed South Street and hit the rear of another traveling north on Main Street. Both vehicles were towed from the scene. I can't help but think about how lucky those passengers were that the impact was not shifted by just a few feet. Anyone who's familiar with this intersection has been eager to support the initiative for a traffic light. I've had a number of people share with me that they knew one or more individuals who were involved in accidents and sadly even killed. Most local residents who should be using this intersection are currently avoiding it by taking alternative routes. This is not a solution, especially as we look ahead to the elementary portion of the Mountain View School opening in the fall. The number of pedestrians and vehicles will increase, and the age of people using the intersection will decrease. Every pre-K through eighth grade student living in the south end of East Hampton, west of Maine, should be able to use South Street as the most direct route to school, whether that's on foot, in a parent's vehicle, or on a school bus. This doesn't just mean at the start or end of the school day, but also in the evening and on weekends for folks of all ages who are attending events and meetings at our city's newest facility. In less than six weeks with no budget and the coldest time of year and during a pandemic, a small team of volunteers has gathered over 1,400 signatures to support this initiative. I understand the cost of this project is substantial, but the cost of not proceeding could be even greater. It's only a matter of time before more injuries or, God forbid, a death occurs. Waiting to meet that criteria to take action is unacceptable. I'm ready to go to the State House to move this initiative forward. I'm requesting support and guidance from those in our city's government to boost support and navigate the next steps. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Wally? You're muted. You're muted.
Wally Rampellus from One Southampton Street. Good evening. And the reason this has to do with an injury that took place on June 1st of 2020, where I fell on Cherry Street in the city. And I have a healthcare proxy, Maureen Roach, and she advises me that I'm not in a position to have the issue remedied regarding my three broken teeth that happened as a result of my fall on June 20th. And the, up until that, up until this time, to get my facts together to essentially state, first of all, that there was a couple that lives at 45 Cherry Street that came to my assistance on the spot right on that day again, June 1st. And like I said, three broken teeth, and I'm looking to be satisfied by the city for the damage to them. And the reason I say that is because there was a hole in the road, but the hole, it was a cavity. It wasn't anything as a result of wear and tear. It was, it was a hole that was sunk in, and it was not planned for. My foot fell into it, and I had no way to get out of it. And as a result, I fell and I bled, and fortunately, Mr. Justin Crosetaire, who lives in the area where I had, not in the area, but on 45 Cherry Street. That's the proximity where my fall was, and they came and they saw the bleeding and and the three broken teeth. But, so it went to the attention. So this matter went, after speaking to the city clerk, to, I filed my case with Argano Insurance Company through Sedgwick. And a claim number was issued. And the woman that I was working with on this, her, I'm sorry, they did not give a name, but the woman that I had spoken to, she said that I would need to provide a before and after photograph of Cherry Street. And this area right here was where I fell approximately, and it was in the road. It was a depression. It was not a crack. It wasn't anything that was prior patched. It was a depression that my foot fell into and my, and three of my teeth were broken. And
So, Mr. Wally, I think we got the message. It's more than three minutes that we usually allow to people to speak.
I don't, I'm sorry.
I don't want to be, sound rude, but we are not allowed to have deliberation with, at police speak time because it's not part of the agenda. So we didn't know what you're going to bring forward. I can give you my number. You can write my number, and you can give me a call later. We can have a conversation. My phone number is 413?
Yes.
977-2676. But, thank you. And I'm sorry about what happened to you.
Okay, 977-
2676.
2676.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Anyone, anyone else from the public? I don't see anyone else. Communication for the electoral official boards and committees. Any councilor have any announcements or councilor wrist?
Yeah, Mr. President, in relation to the South Street intersection, I've been working with Joni, and she's doing a great job. And I just wanted to publicly thank Counselor Zaret and the Public Safety Committee. Oh, my God. I'm so sorry for taking this up this evening and putting it on the agenda. I think this is a long time. We've dealt with this before, and I'm very happy to see that we're going to try and do something again. It may have to be stronger. And I'm hoping every counselor gets involved because this is getting serious. I think what Joni just said hits the nail on the head. So thank you very much, Counselor Zaret and Public Safety for putting this into your committee.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Saret?
I'll piggyback off of that, and I think without being able to say too much, because I think this is before us, a new business, I just wanted to applaud Counselors Rist and Derby for all the work they've done so far and really seeing, good to see resident advocacy in action with the close to 1,000 signatures that have been collected on this. So thank you to all so far. Just really quickly to something that I don't know if it's inspiring or concerning, but the empty nip bottle bin in front of City Hall is halfway full again. I haven't had a chance to figure out how many bottles are in a bin yet. I'm going to do that next week when I'm off. But it's good to see that, again, talking about city initiatives, that our residents are picking up this ubiquitous trash item and disposing of it. Fortunately, we still don't have recycling available, and the expanded bottle bill is still bouncing around at the State House. But I think this is a good example of how significant this piece of litter is certainly in our city and elsewhere. Kind of on that note, really quickly too, we've set citywide cleanup day for May 15th, so there'll be some communication going out soon about that organizing. And it would be great to get all the counselors involved, and certainly I'd love to talk offline to the precinct counselors if they'd like to help organize some of the cleanups that day in their precinct. And that's it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Saret. Any other councilor? And it's a bit early. It's not 6:15 yet. It's okay to start late, the public hearing. I don't think it's okay to start early, but I will let the mayor communication to be now.
Good evening. I have no mayor communication.
Mayor, do you present? And we don't have it in our agenda. We don't have it as a new business. We have the new position of the, it's part of the agenda. You don't want to talk about it, or you want us just to move it to a committee?
I would prefer it just moved to committee, following your lead of getting work done in committee.
Perfect. Okay, because it's not part of the new business. I will let the city council vice president to move it now.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to move the mayor's request. I don't have it directly in front of me. I believe, is it for $50,000?
Oh, it's executive assistant to the mayor.
Executive assistant to the mayor to ordinance subcommittee.
You have a motion and a second from the mayor to request the addition to the executive assistant to the mayor to the pay plan. Any further discussion? See you now, Barbara.
Salem Derby?
Excuse me. I'm sorry, Barbara. Yeah, don't worry, guys. I got it. Counselor Saret?
Just a quick point of order, Mr. President. Did the vice president say ordinance?
I'm sorry?
Did the vice president say, does this mean move to ordinance?
Yes, that's correct.
Not finance?
No, no, finance. It's a new position.
Okay, just checking. Thank you, sir.
Barbara?
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Hi.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Connie Denham?
Hi.
Motion passes. I will take a motion to open the public hearing. I'll move.
Second.
You have a motion and a second to open the public hearing. Any further discussion? See you now, Barbara.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Yes.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Motion passes. The first item in the public hearing is to amend the city ordinance, Chapter 7, Section 715. Counselor Rist?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met to deal with a request from the council clerk for a salary increase. This was approved three to zero. The council clerk for the public and for the council's information is not, the city clerk is not required to be the council clerk. The council clerk position is separate and independent. Although it is extremely efficient for our council, city clerk, to be the council clerk, as we've all recognized Barbara's work, it is not necessary. This position was not raised, the salary or stipend was not raised for five and a half years, lastly in 2016. We are recommending $5,000 over what was $3240. That increase, if you take it for 10 years, and I say that because this probably won't come up again for five more years, but that's like a 3.5% increase in salary, very close to what inflationary increases are today for employees. One of the things that the committee recognized as Barbara's work for the council has increased exponentially over the last few years. And I can say that as a long-term city counselor, the amount of work this very active council has had the last two terms has been very, very welcome, but very extensive. And as a result, Barbara spends a lot more time doing her council work. We all, the stipend also is now being designed to be a stipend monthly payment rather than by meeting. This will allow the president to call a meeting of the council at any time. As I was the vice president for President Coniff, we often discussed if we have a special meeting, do we need to get money to pay Barbara? This new situation will allow any amount of meetings necessary because she would be paid a salary, not a stipend per meeting. We did include $100 in case an alternate council clerk was necessary because Barbara couldn't attend a meeting, but it should be noted that that's only for the meeting. All of the work before the meeting and after the meeting, setting up public hearings and all of the work that the council clerk does is still going to be in the hands of the council clerk, not the person who might be the alternate at the meeting. As I said, this increase to $5,000 was approved three to zero by the Finance Committee.
Any councilor have any questions? Counselor Kuzinski?
I just would like to say I cannot believe we're getting the services in such a professional manner for the money we've been paying. We are gosh darn lucky, and I am fully supportive of this move.
Thank you. Any other councilor? Anyone from the public want to make any comments or have any question about this? See you now. I just want to do a clarification, and Counselor Rist was correct when he was using Barbara as a name, but it's for the position. It's for the city council clerk position that we're getting this, and I hope Barbara will stay with us. But I would just want to be clear, the amount of work that Barbara is doing, it is not just the Barbara is the clerk position, and when we raising this is for that position. The locally is for Barbara because we have her, and she's doing a good job, but it's for the position. Barbara?
No, I didn't make-
Oh, would I have a motion and a second? Yeah, I'm sorry.
Would you like me to make a motion, Mr. President? Wait, Counselor.
Before we have Counselor Kuzinski.
I recognize that this is for the position, but I would imagine that should there be someone else who applies for the position, that would be the discretion of the council as to what rate that person would be hired. Is that correct?
We would have to have a new.
It's for the position.
Yep, it is for the position. I understand, but that is a fixed amount, and that is a requirement to pay that amount? Or it is something that is the maximum that we could pay?
No. May I, Mr. President?
Yes, Counselor Rist?
The amount that we're selecting can be changed by the council at any time. If you're suggesting that a new council clerk might need to receive more or less, we would have to meet and make that decision again. There is no fixed amount for this as required by any charter designation or anything.
That clarification helps me. I thank you, Mr. President, and Counselor Rist.
Yeah, basically have to go through the same process that we're doing now.
Are you ready for a motion, Mr. President?
I'll take the motion, yeah.
I move to amend the Easthampton City Ordinance as Chapter 7, Section 7.5, clerk to the city council salary, so that it reads in accordance with the Home Rule Charter, Article 2, Section 2-8E, the salary of the clerk to the city council shall be $5,000 per year effective July 1st, 2022. Compensation for an alternate clerk coverage shall be $100 per council meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? See you now, Barbara.
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Hi.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Connie Denham?
Hi.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
Motion passes. The second item that we have is an interdepartmental transfer. Counselor Rist?
Yes, the amount is $2,000. This is required for city council advertising. There's a great deal of legal advertising required because there's a lot of public hearings going out, Union Street, for instance, a lot of stuff, and we've run out of money in this budget. So the Finance Committee approved a $2,000 increase for the city council's budget for legal advertising. That vote was three to zero as well.
Any councilor have any questions? See you now. Anyone from the public have any question or comment? I don't see anyone. Counselor Rist?
I make a motion that the full council approve an interdepartmental transfer. The amount requested is $2,000 to be transferred from the reserve fund, $2,000, to be transferred to the city council advertising budget, $2,000 for the following purpose, to provide additional funding for city council legal advertising for the rest of the fiscal year 2022.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to interdepartmental transfer for $2,000 to supplement to the city council legal advertising budget for the fiscal year 2022. Any further discussion? See you now, Barbara.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Hi.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Sound like he say aye, right? Motion passes. The next item is a supplemental appropriation. We have three. The first one is $20,000 to supplement the legal service budget due to the Union Street legal expenses.
That's correct, Mr. President. We approve this. We have a lot of legal fees, especially for Union Street. A lot of, as you recall, we passed order of taking regarding this, and there's a lot of legal work to be done for all of these, the execution of legal takings and the things necessary for Union Street. So this $20,000 is specific to the Union Street design project and the legal work our city attorney and other attorneys are doing.
Any councilor have any question? Anyone from the public have any question or comment? I don't see anyone. Mayor, I know I saw you turn off the camera. Do you have any comment?
No, I just wanted to be on camera if there were any questions from council.
Okay. I don't see anyone from the public, anyone from the council. Mr. Counselor Rist?
Thank you. I move that the full council approve a supplemental appropriation. The amount requested is $20,000 to be transferred from the cannabis account, $20,000, to be transferred to the legal account, $20,000 for the following purpose, to cover the deficit for legal expenses that were incurred from title assessments for the Union Street design project.
Second.
You know, we have a motion and a second for the supplemental appropriation of $2,000 to supplement the legal services budget due to the Union Street legal expenses. Any further discussion? See you now, Barbara.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Hi.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Connie Denham?
Hi.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
And Tom Peak?
Aye.
Motion passes. Counselor Rist?
The next upper appropriation is $32,254.21 for the IT department. It's basically, again, to cover department operating costs that were insufficient in the FY22 budget. There's a number of items that are covered, but it's specifically because there wasn't sufficient funds originally budgeted. This is happening a lot. The mayor's choice to be conservative in her budgeting and using now free cash to cover those expenses is why we're doing this, and I think it's a good plan. I noticed Dr. Comaford is here. If there's any questions for her.
Clarification, do-
JP, you're breaking up. We lost you. Your internet is-
Anyone here cancel this dropout? I lost.
Excuse me.
That may be-
You please turn off the video because we're losing you. Maybe you turn off the video, we can hear you.
Okay, how about now?
It does sound better.
Oh, good, because I couldn't hear Counselor Rist, and I just was wondering if anybody else couldn't hear him.
Counselor Kuzinski, I look like it's your internet.
Thank you.
Do you want, Counselor Kuzinski, for the record, do you want him to repeat it? For your benefit?
If you wouldn't mind. If you wouldn't mind, that would be great. I appreciate it. Thank you.
This amount, $32,254, is specifically to supplement the IT department's budget. It doesn't, it has an insufficient amount of money from the FY22 budget. The budget was conservatively budgeted by the mayor back in June with the knowledge that we may have to supplement many budgets, and we've been doing this with free cash. So that's the reason for it. It's a number of items in the budget that have to be dealt with. Dr. Comaford is here if you want further explanation or if any of the counselors do.
Thank you, Counselor Rist, for repeating the information for the benefit of Counselor Kuzinski. And I see Henry, Counselor Rothschild?
Yeah, um, thank you. I know that our technology department has been doing a lot with a little, so I just want to give an opportunity for Dr. Comaford to kind of. Maybe let for the benefit of the public and for us to hear about some of the things that are. Being done there that this is helping to cover.
Yep, before letting her speak, any other councilor have any other questions before that? Karen, do you want to say something?
Yes, so as. As it was said, this is to supplement the budget. Because this current budget was a copy of last year budget. When the IT for the city and the school were divided, there were some things that fell through. And some things that now the city has to pay for itself, for example, the internet connection. And there are a few things that we're hoping to implement right away and one of them is the cloud backups. We're now doing backups to the cloud. So if anything goes wrong in our systems, we can quickly run from the cloud. So that's, that's a huge expense and that's something that we're going to have to pay. Yearly because in the cloud you rent the cloud, so that is a new. Expense in addition to paying for things that were not completely accounted for. And some of them I have a list in here. Some of them is social archiving that we have to do for all of our Facebook accounts. And we have multiple Facebook accounts. So another new thing that we have is called Virtu, which is very interesting. We purchased. A few licenses, 25 licenses of encryption. So 25 of our users are now going to be able to encrypt their messages and this is very important, not only for human services, but for our health department. And their encryption is going to carry through email, but also through their drive. Any files and information that they put in there is going to be completely encrypted. We use encryption, the regular encryption that Google has that is very powerful, but this is now an extra layer and we're paying extra for that too. And then, you know, some of the things that were moved to the IT department like paper. The purchase of toner. Simple things like those. We're just trying to pay the bills really with this amount.
Any councilor have any question? You know, anyone from the public have any question? Shelby?
I just had a question about the cloud storage of information. Is there? Are we contracted with a specific company for that and is that a new contract?
Yes, so most of our contracts goes to authorized sellers by the state. The state is wonderful in providing resources for IT. They have an entire list of vendors that they pre authorize and contracted with. So the price that we pay is less. So for example, when we buy in got connections or any place like that, we already get a reduced rate. And they get authorized by their security system. So we are using a system called Dato, but we're going through a company called Enterprise, which is the one that is the in between. And that is the company that is authorized to sell us those products. So yeah, so we are confident that we are, if that's a question, being in compliance, what? What with what the requirement is?
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? I don't see anyone. I do have a question. The the fees or the we are paying to get Zoom accounts are coming from your department or we're paying those? The Zoom account for another departments. So that basically my question is, is this money that we are? Almost going to approve tonight or eventually you know, approve tonight, we're going to approve it. We we're going to use it for paying Zoom account. Google and all this stuff that we are moving forward?
Yes, yes, yes. So at the end of the day, yes, we are paying with Zoom and Zoom was part of the budget, but Google wasn't. So that's part of the discrepancies that we're trying to get together, but. Yes, we're trying to bring to get the IT budget, the technology budget, one budget, so there is no duplication of services. Because we found out that departments in need of certain services will move forward and purchase a system. That is similar to the system that is being purchased by another department. So now we're paying twice for something that we can really just combine. So that's the goal to bring everything together and we're in the process of identifying ways in which we can do that and. This the situations in which it makes sense to do that.
Thank you. Consular Riz?
You ready for a motion, Mr. President?
Yes.
I move that the full council approve a supplemental appropriation. The amount requested is $32,254.21 to be transferred from free cash. To be transferred to the following accounts. The computer miscellaneous professional services account, $11,552.74. The computer equipment account, $1,561.47. The computer telephone account, $12,140. The computer forms and supplies account, $2,000. And the computer. peripherals account, $5,000. For the following purpose, to supplement the IT department budget, this request is to cover the department operating costs. It will supplement the insufficient FY22 budget, which was a replication of the FY21 budget without adjustments. Need a second.
Second.
We have a motion on a second for the supplemental appropriation of $32,254.21 to supplement the fiscal year 2022 IT budget. Any further discussion? See none, Barbara?
Lindsay Rothschild? Yes. Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Connie Denham?
Hi.
Salem Derby?
Hi.
Omar Gomez?
Hi.
JP Kuzinski?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Hi.
Dan Rist?
Hi.
Motion passes. Consular Riz?
Last is a supplemental appropriation of $325,200. This is for the fire department to cover also some department budgetary needs. Again, that were insufficient from the FY22 original budget. What's interesting here is you'll notice on this that overtime, at least I don't see it, I believe in Chris Norris is here. Our chief will correct me if I'm wrong, but a lot of our overtime budget essentially with. Pretty much paramedics is being covered by FEMA. Shake your head if I'm right, Chris. I just want to make sure my notes are correct. And we're not having to have to pay for a lot of that. Most of this other stuff is because we're insufficient in those areas. One thing he did note, which I find extraordinary is. The amount of money that we're collecting, which goes to the general fund from the evidence account is extraordinarily high. And chief, I hope I don't have that number written down if you'll express that again, but that is welcome. To the budget, although we are sending people out, we have to send them sometimes down all the way to Bay State if if we have to, that. Lends us to more overtime because you have to bring people in. I'm going to laugh before I mess this up completely. Chief, can you continue with this discussion?
Chief?
Go ahead, Mr. President.
Yes, um, before you start, any councilor have any question to Consular Riz before going to the chief? So you know, Consular, Consular. Chief Norris?
Thank you, Mr. President, and good evening, everyone. Yeah, so as Counselor Riz kind of identified. This request coming forward tonight is to essentially fund a lot of contractual requirements to get us through the end of the year. And then really there's two outstanding line items that were initially brought forward. That with the help of the mayor and her financial team, we really. In terms of the mayor sharpened our pencil and looked at the possibilities of getting some of that refunded through COVID. The two line items were EMS supplies and then overtime as Counselor Riz kind of alluded to. And we have backed those out initially. And our goal is to get as much as that covered under the FEMA COVID-19. Funding as possible. And as we get deeper into this fiscal year, hopefully not need any substantial additional monies for either overtime or supplies. So that's, those are the two line items that we're just kind of currently watching. The line items that are in front of you right now, again, those are contractual requirements. The one just of note is miscellaneous professional and technical services of $20,000. Just for the council and the public to better understand what that is. When we provide transportation of EMS patients, we have the ability to build the insurance company. We have a contract with a third party billing agency who collects 2.99% of what we actually collect. So as I'm here tonight, ask for $20,000 more for that as much as that's a financial challenge. It's also a benefit because again, as Counselor Riz alluded to. Our trends right now are looking very well. So at the end of this fiscal year, we're looking at for the first time ever for the city collecting over a million dollars in total EMS revenue. When you go back over the last five years, we usually have been collecting on average between 675,000 and $700,000 on average. So we certainly have, we've changed our operations. It's a reflection of our internal processes. It's a reflection of the call volume and the increase. And it's a reflection also of the additional calls in the West Hampton contract. So those are just a couple of comments, just to help clarify and add more context to what Counselor Riz was talking about. And I'm certainly open to any questions.
Thank you. Thank you, chief. Any councilor have any questions? I do have a question. Chief, when you talk about that money coming in. Is that money that you are mentioning is going to be almost a million or maybe a little bit more than a million is coming to your funds?
Yeah, so I really look at, so yes, it all goes to the general fund. And there's really three pots of money when you look at EMS revenue. The first pot is the retainer fee for the West Hampton contract, which is, which is $25,000 every July. Along with those transportation services. The second pot of money is the CPE program, which is a Medicare certified public expenditure program. Which I just completed today and estimates of that are coming back right now at about $120,000. And then the third pot of money for EMS revenue is the actual 911 transports collectively overall. Whether that's the city of East Hampton or surrounding communities, but but to answer your question directly, all of that goes to the general fund.
Thank you. Anyone from the public have any question or comment? I don't see anyone. Consular Riz? I'm sorry, before the. Take this again?
Hi, sorry, I just wanted to let you know. Because I was asked to have it, the free cash left after the IT appropriation and this fire department appropriation. Will be $1,596,103.44.
Thank you, Jen.
Thank you, Jen. I was about to ask that.
Consular Riz?
Yes, I have a motion in front of us. Bear with me, counsel. This is a long. Second reading of the appropriation. I move that the full, the full council approve a supplemental appropriation. The amount requested is $325,200 to be transferred from the free cash account to the following expenses. Medical expenses, $9,000. Fire education incentive, $125,000. Fire equipment annual service, $25,000. EMS incentive, $135,000. Miscellaneous professional and technical services, $20,000. Holiday pay, $9,000. Uniforms, $2,200. For the following purposes, medical expenses, funding to meet the city deductible for the fiscal year, $10,000 annually combined for both police and fire. To cover costs of members who have sustained injuries while on the duty this fiscal year. Fire education incentive is funding to meet contractual requirements for the fiscal year. Fire equipment annual service to meet requires outlined by Fire National Protection Standards. EMS incentive funding to meet contractual requirements for the fiscal year in addition to contractual requirements for completion of paramedic school for three employees. Miscellaneous professional and technical services are funds to pay third party billing agency for EMS revenue collections. For the fiscal year due to the increase in revenue from EMS Calvine. Holiday pay funds used to cover the Juneteenth, the Juneteenth new holiday. Uniforms funds used to cover contractual requires for new employees after probationary period. That was a motion. I need a second.
Second.
We have a motion on a second for the supplemental appropriation of $325,200 to 200 to supplement the fiscal year 2022 fire department budget. Any further discussion? See you know, Barbara?
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Connie Denham?
Hi.
Salem Derby?
Hi.
Omar Gomez?
Hi.
JP Kuzinski?
Yes.
Tom Peak? Dan Rist?
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mr. President?
Yeah, Mr. Riz?
I move that the public hearing be closed.
Second.
We have a motion on a second to close the public hearing. Barbara?
Connie Denham?
Hi.
Salem Derby?
Hi.
Omar Gomez?
Hi.
JP Kuzinski?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Hi.
Dan Rist?
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Hi.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Motion passes. Public hearing is closed. We have the correspondence announcement from the president of vice president communications. Mr. Vice President, do you have any communication?
Sorry, Mr. President, I do not have any communication. Thank you. Having technical difficulties.
That's fine. Don't worry. Report of standing standing committees of finance, Consular Riz?
Thank you, Mr. President. We met last week and approved all of that was settled in the public hearing. I do, we approved a three by three to zero, a new exhibit B pay scale. Which you received in your packet and amended budget, amended agenda. I would like to now make a motion to set a public hearing as this is an ordinance for our next meeting for the exhibit B pay scale, the new exhibit P pay scale. That was a motion.
Second.
We have a motion on a second to schedule public hearing for our next meeting, 6:15. Any further discussion? See you know, Barbara?
Salem Derby?
Hi.
Omar Gomez?
Hi.
JP Kuzinski?
Hi.
Tom Peak?
Hi.
Dan Rist?
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Yes.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Connie Denham?
Hi.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our next meeting is next week on the 23rd. We will deal with the new business that's coming today and we will also deal with quarterly reports that we put off from last meeting. As well as a beginning discussion on stipends for stipends and salaries of elected officials, which is a requirement by the charter. Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes.
Thank you, Consular Riz. Public safety, Consular Riz.
Thank you, Mr. President. We. Met, what was that? Sorry, my. We recently met to review. The. Fire Department Annual Report. I want to commend Chief Norris. For a very well put together full report as well as a PowerPoint presentation that was provided at our last meeting. The full report is in the last packet. I can send out the PowerPoint that the chief sent to us and I also recommend. Watching the. And I also recommend watching the recent, our recent committee meeting, which is just around an hour. There are some excellent supplemental questions by our committee members, as well as some clarification and expansion on some of the points from the chief. Just a couple of points, some of which were just made previously in the public hearing. We had a good just general overview of the department, which I think for members of the city council and certainly the public is very useful just understanding the command hierarchy and how we are currently staffed. Discuss the current calls, the call volume, which as previously mentioned as well, is increasing our number of overlapping calls. Mutual aid, the West Hampton contract, which again, as previously mentioned, we are aware of the twenty-five thousand dollar flat fee that is paid to the city. And West Hampton is also generating approximately at least sixty thousand dollars to the city as well, so that's eighty-five thousand dollars there in revenue. We reviewed the current vehicles, their condition, some needs that are coming up for potential requests for vehicle replacement. And as mentioned, the fire department has over nine hundred thousand dollars as per the report that the chief provided us in revenue that goes to the general fund. And also they were able to obtain over three hundred thousand dollars in grants as well. And just the ongoing initiatives and training, just wanted, again, just take this moment to certainly commend the chief for the information that he provided to us and the good work that their department is doing. I, seeing that the quarterly review of public safety departments is is on, is now a rotating agenda item, I want to make a motion to review the quarterly fire department report and the twenty twenty-one fire department annual report from our agenda.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Counselor Rist?
I think the counselor said, review, I think he meant remove from the agenda. That's what you're saying, right?
Because I'm sorry, that was
just to be confirmed. All right.
Counselor Saret?
Yes, I just wanted to remove those. At this point, they're either repetitive or not relevant. We have the quarterly review of public safety on our agenda, and I think that covers those items.
Right, so Counselor Saret, I guess you have to remove the motion and the second because you didn't said remove.
Oh, I said review.
You say review.
Oh, I apologize. I think I've, so I will, did someone second that?
I seconded my point of order. I think if, I think if there, Mr. President?
Yes.
Yeah, I think if there were just an amendment proposed by Counselor Zaret, that would suffice.
I think, I think it is, I think it's easier if we remove it and we withdraw and make a new motion, I think that will be easier for everybody.
I leave that to the motioner.
Yeah, I'm happy to review, remove my motion.
Who, who second it?
J P.
I did. I'll second.
You want to withdraw that? You're second?
Withdraw the second.
Okay.
Counselor Saret?
Uh, thank you for catching my, my, my slip, my slip in my words there. Yes, at this time, I'd like to remove from our agenda the quarterly file, fire department report and the twenty twenty-one fire department annual report, certainly without prejudice. They're just repetitive items at this point.
We, we have a motion and a second to remove the quarterly file report, but it is, any further discussion? Seeing none, Barbara?
Omar Gomez.
Hi.
J P Kozinski.
Hi.
Tom Peak.
Hi.
Dan Rist.
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Hi.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Connie Denham.
Hi.
Salem Derby.
Hi.
Motion passes. Counselor Saret?
Thank you, Mr. President. We will be meeting on March first. That's next, I'm sorry, that's two Tuesdays, the week after next Tuesday at six P M. At that point, we will have the quarterly discussion with the police department. I imagine there'll be a little catch-up there too, as we enter into these quarterly reviews that there'll probably be a little bit on the front end, just to catch the council and the city up. And we'll likely, if, seeing that there's some new business, if that is sent to committee, we'll probably address some of those items as well. Also, just to mention, I anticipate with some of the buildup of our, on our agenda here, we'll probably start meeting at least twice a month because we'll have quarterly reports once a month. And we'll need to discuss the other agenda items. And I want to try to avoid long meetings and have everything, give everything the time it's due. Just looking over our agenda items, I don't see anything imminently expiring. So thus concludes.
Thank you, Counselor Saret. Counselor Rist?
I apologize, Counselor Zaret, when is your public safety meeting scheduled for?
March first at six P M.
Thank you very much.
Appointments, Counselor Rothschild?
Hello. So we had two appointments before us and two of us were present. We met on February ninth. So there was Mary Louise Morris and Connie Dawson. Both of them are strong, strongly believe in community involvement. Both of them have a long history of community involvement. So Mary Louise Morris has just moved here from, a year ago, from Holyoke, where she spent forty years doing service on all sorts of committees and boards. And she's already friends of the council on aging and involved in other ways in East Hampton. And she's now wants to be a member of the Commission on Disability. She has three close family members with different disabilities. And that really enables her to see how different disabilities impact how people move through the world. So she's really looking forward to hopefully joining this committee. The other one is Connie Dawson, and as we, most of us know her, she's deeply concerned about the climate crisis. And she wants to work with the C V East Hampton to develop carbon neutrality and sustainability. And she thinks that the, the Energy Advisory Committee would be a good place to work on that. She wanted to remind us that we declared a commitment to fighting climate change by passing a resolution declaring a climate emergency last September. And she wants to work with us in the community to help us realize that. So the two of us that were there voted two to zero to confirm both of the following mayoral appointments. So I'd like to make a motion to confirm the following mayoral appointments. Connie Dawson is an associate member to the advisory committee with a term ending twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-four. And Mary Louise Morris to the Commission on Disability with a term ending twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-two.
Second. Now, a motion and a second for the two mayoral appointments. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Barbara?
Connie Denham.
Hi.
Salem Derby.
Hi.
Omar Gomez.
Hi.
J P Kozinski.
Hi.
Tom Peak.
Hi.
Dan Rist.
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Hi.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
And our next, I think we have one appointment that's coming to us. So our next meeting is Wednesday, February twenty-third at four P M. And this concludes.
Thank you, Counselor Rothschild. Ordinance, Counselor Derby?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow night at six P M. Tomorrow night, we are going to be discussing the ordinance review committee's findings. We've talked about this a little bit, but we have identified some that are actionable in the near term. And we're going to identify the ones that are going to need a little bit more work, and we're going to start doing that work tomorrow night. The meeting after that is going to be March third. And at that meeting, we are going to be looking at the vacant storefront ordinance that we got from the E D I C. So we're going to invite members of the E D I C to be at that meeting as well. And hopefully, other interested parties can attend that on March third at six P M. We have March eighth, a continued public hearing with the planning board to look at the affordable housing initiatives and ordinances that we have in our committee. So we have some things coming up. And other than that, I think that we're all set as far as expiration dates, so thus concludes.
Thank you, Counselor Derby. Property, Counselor Kozinski? Any report?
Sorry, it was a little hard to unmute. The is, there is no report from the property committee at this time.
Thank you, Counselor Kozinski. Rules and government relations, Counselor Rist?
No report at this time, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Rist. I have committee senior task work of committee, Counselor Kozinski, any updates?
Mr. President, we have received a draft for the council and the committee is expected to be meeting very shortly to discuss that and make its presentation in March. I did notice housekeeping measure that there is an expiration on March first. So I would respectfully request a sixty-day extension.
Does the motion?
That's in the form of a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to extend it for sixty days. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Barbara?
Salem Derby.
Hi.
Omar Gomez.
Hi.
J P Kozinski.
Hi.
Tom Peak.
Hi.
Dan Rist.
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Hi.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Connie Denham.
Hi.
Report, Mr. President?
Thank you, Counselor Kozinski. We don't have any pending business, new business, pass it to the Vice President Derby.
Thank you, Mr. President, and you're gonna have to bear with me because I'm having a little bit of an issue with my two screens. So try to be patient with me. So the first piece of new business is a mayoral appointment. And so I would like to make a motion for Forrest Abel to the Veterans Council with the term expiration of twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-two to the Appointments Committee.
Second.
We have a motion and a seconds to send to the Appointments Committee the mayoral appointment. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Barbara?
Omar Gomez.
Hi.
J P Kozinski.
Hi.
Tom Peak.
Hi.
Dan Rist.
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Hi.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Connie Denham.
Hi.
Salem Derby.
Hi.
Motion passes, Vice President Derby?
Thank you. And I think the way I'd like to do this, if it pleases the President, is to look at the two public safety pieces of new business and then have Counselor Rist do the C P A appropriation, if that's all right.
Yep, that's okay.
Okay, so we have two pieces of new business for the Public Safety Committee. And I would like to move them both to the Public Safety Committee. One is a request to add a review of South Main Street four-way traffic light to Public Safety Committee and the request for Public Safety Committee to review electric speed monitoring signs. I'd like to move those both to Public Safety.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to move these two items to the Public Safety Committee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Barbara?
J P Kozinski.
Hi.
Tom Peak.
Hi.
Dan Rist.
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Hi.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Connie Denham.
Hi.
Salem Derby.
Hi.
Omar Gomez.
Hi. Motion buzzer. Vice President Derby?
Yeah, so I would like to turn it over to Counselor Rist for the fifteen thousands for cost to add a historic preservation restriction to Emily Williston Library.
Counselor Rist?
Thank you, Mr. President. I will make a first reading of the following supplemental appropriation request. It comes from the Community Preservation Act Committee. The amount is for the following appropriation, fifteen thousand dollars to be appropriated from the C P A reserved for historic resources account. Fifteen thousand dollars to be appropriated to the Emily Williston Library Historic Preservation Restriction Account. Fifteen thousand dollars for the following purpose: to provide funding for legal fees, conducting appraisals, baseline documentation, and other relevant costs as necessary to implement a historic preservation restriction on the Emily Williston Library building. I would like to make a motion both to send this to Finance Committee and to schedule a public hearing for this appropriation at our next meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a seconds to move to Finance Committee and to set up a public hearing of the supplemental appropriations from C P A funding of fifteen thousand for cause of the added history press restriction on Emily Williston Library. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Barbara?
Tom Peak.
Hi.
Dan Rist.
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Hi.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Connie Denham.
Hi.
Salem Derby.
Hi.
Omar Gomez.
Hi.
J P Kozinski.
Hi.
Motion passes. Look like we do report standing committees, new business, old business. And we do all our business for tonight. I will take a motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, I move to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. Barbara?
Dan Rist.
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Hi.
Owen Zaret.
You betcha, yes.
Connie Denham.
Hi.
Salem Derby.
Hi.
Omar Gomez.
Hi.
J P Kozinski.
Yes.
And Tom Peak.
Hi.
Motion passes. Everybody have a great evening.
This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.